...a roll call.
Marty Gane.
Jane Lowry.
Roger Warren.
Rich Penau.
Ted Ridwick, planner.
Antarctic, board secretary.
On the agenda this evening is all business. We've got physical events, Jones subdivision. That's all business. New business is where's most sales, Kate's homemade butter. I think that's it. The last item was taking off together, right?
Well, we just got, they just submitted their stuff at four ten this afternoon.
What is it?
Uh, DuBois Auto, uh, Chucker.
Uh, has everybody read the minutes of the last meeting? Minutes of July twenty-fifth?
Yeah, move foots out.
A second on that.
Yeah. I was only here partially, so.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed? So passed. Ted, you want to give us a brief update on Jones subdivision?
Yeah, Jones subdivision, uh, Mr. Jones wants to basically make the subdivision go away. We don't want, make all the lots, he's got five lots and recombine them into a single property. He has no intentions of turning the subdivision into his point. I told him that's okay, go do it, no problem. And his attorney doesn't agree. His attorney says we need to have official action from the planning board. So, uh, he said, uh, I want you to evoke, the planning board should evoke section eight three F. And, uh, well, okay, if you really want to do that, I guess that's for his legal purposes. He feels like that justifies and puts a stake through the heart of it over at the York County Registry of Deeds. So, basically, uh, Mr. Jones apologizes, they can't be here tonight. Uh, we, we went over the, uh, the improvements out there. Most he had done is he'd done some cutting to the road, tree cutting, and for several lots, but it made no substantial start on any of the project. As you know, under section eight, uh, three F, with subdivision orders, you don't have substantial completion of your project. Except when it's phased, um, you must complete it within two years, if not, the project is null and void. So, uh, he would like us to revoke that and make a resolution that his lawyer can use and then get it to the, uh, York County Registry of Deeds to have it, uh, basically declared null and void, they're going to stamp it on the, uh, file, in the digital file, and then he can combine it. You take that digital file, get the assessor and say, tax me for the one property, and that's fine.
Question, short, on that, where his is located at the time, okay? In a buts, or could it, uh, be used for the BI district?
No.
Because it buts it, because if, if I'm thinking correctly, Interda actually is located behind Tyre Warehouse?
Uh, yeah, a little farther down.
Or then it'll be around the, uh, machine shop?
Oh, yeah.
Right down to there, but I mean, would that constitute anything for industrial? That's what my question is.
I don't remember.
If we didn't have that, we didn't first, when Mr. Jones first started, not two years ago, but before that, don't think we even had that. And the BI district wasn't expanded as it was for the turn up beforehand. The BI district was only a thousand feet.
Oh, remember that the, uh, it's a thousand feet on the east side, and it's much farther than a thousand feet on the west side. However, this subdivision did go through in September of two thousand and eight, and the subdivision went through in two thousand and seven.
Okay, I'm just, I mean, wrong in my thinking through the.
See, the changes, pardon me, the ordinance changes occurred in two thousand and seven, but the subdivision occurred in two thousand and eight. Now, he's off Old Post Road, and that area is most definitely our two now. We have a number of different subdivisions, as you know, across the road.
Correct.
Farther down, Haley Road, down a lot farther, uh, that's all unwilling, those are all residential subdivisions in the world too. And I don't remember us changing the boundary of the BI district.
I'm just wondering if, if it could be encompassed of that, because without Turnup coming off Old Post Road, the depth lies or everything else.
Well, if that were to happen, and I can't recall, because I don't have a map during summer, but, um, we would be in a situation where, uh, he's actually, it's more advantageous for him to combine it to one lot if he were to, to, uh, to want to give me kind of, uh, business momentum. But I believe his lot terminates at the back of this subdivision, I don't think it was included, so it'd have to be absorbed by another property. He does not go through Route one, no.
No, I know he doesn't go through Route one, but I'm just saying, his back lot is about a thousand feet coming off Route one.
So, it's really not good to mention that advantage for him, and besides, right now, he's got, he would have lots that are too small for, you know, those are less than an acre, if you recall.
Okay, so all we.
It's closer, so.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to make for the purposes of discussion.
Yep.
I, I move that we declare the subdivision permit issued April tenth, two thousand and eight, for a five lot subdivision located at five eighty-seven Old Post Road, formerly map fourteen lot five, to be null and void due to the lack of substantial commencement of improvements in accordance with section eight three F of the Arundel subdivision committee, uh, subdivision ordinance.
A second on that?
Second.
Can I ask you to, can I?
Yeah, I was going to.
Yeah, I, I just did that for the sake of discussion.
No, I was, I was getting that.
Red?
Called the, the, this is finding the facts.
Can you possibly amend that, or I'm saying, at, also at the request of?
No, it's right under findings of facts.
Okay, I'm just.
Yes, I, I wasn't sure that we needed to do anything with the finding of facts. We're just saying, hey, you didn't do what you were supposed to do with the permit, it's null and void.
Yeah, basically, that's what we're saying, but.
This I sent to Alfred.
Right. Question on that, we have lot five dash zero one listed twice. Is there a five dash?
Yeah.
I missed it, you made me read it in like two seconds, it's like four twenty-eight today. Sorry, it should be five.
It's in a couple of places, first and second.
Two.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's only one five one and five zero one. What's missing is five zero two.
Right.
So, in order for us to sign this.
That should be five zero two, not five zero one.
Go ahead. So, for us to sign this, we have to reprint it, right?
Yeah.
Uh, it's looking improved, okay, we have some. Well, okay, all in favor?
Yep.
Yeah.
All opposed? So passed? Okay, next item on the agenda is, uh, where's most sales? Linda just handed me a new plan. So, that's how it's seen. Would you like to present that?
You asked for eleven by seventeen copies, remember?
Do you have a large one for me?
West one. This is different than what David presented, isn't it?
No, uh, the only thing different about it is he moved the cars back slightly. Still the same size, he moved it back so that you could see that the cars don't actually have to go on the curb. Basically, what we've done, we've made a decision that the front entrance, we always had an issue with people coming in at both directions.
Yeah.
And parking right in front of the doorway. So, what we want to do is want to narrow it, make it a one-way. So, what we're doing is that gray area in front of the building is basically curving sidewalk, whatever you want to call it. The, the, the two areas on the side is like a raise up to the curbing height, so that it now becomes wheelchair accessible. That is the handicap entrance into the front of the building. So, it's raised to just the, um, curbing height. Basically eliminating, uh, the few hardens spaces that we did have in front. It was, uh, and, um, we thought it'd be a nice place to angle cars and make it, you know, a little fancy display there for them, and, um.
You put a table out there so they can sit?
Sure.
Now, that way, air can bump into the cars.
But, uh, basically, we originally had some shrubbery in there, which was going to be consistent with the existing shrubbery, but we took it out. We might use some vegetation in there. I don't know if you have any other questions or concerns.
Yeah, which way is it going one way?
It's going.
Right to left, left, right?
Oh, yeah, no, the entry, oh, I guess that's where you're looking at the plan, but when you pull in here, it's going that way.
So, it's heading south?
Right, because they have to come in here to come, to come into the service entrance anyway, so they will either park here, go in the service entrance, or they'll keep on going, they won't have a choice. They're not going to be able to stop in front of the door anymore, which was the other choice.
And there will be two questions, we can sandwich, so that somebody doesn't want to come back across the building. And then, how high is that raised concrete pad going to be?
Well, it should be on here, because this is an engineered plan. The raised concrete is going to be as high as what your sidewalk height would be, you know what I'm saying?
Six inches.
Is that what the sidewalk height is? I'm not sure. Uh, I know that this ramp the way that it's, I mean, it's hard for me to, to spring, but this right here, it's, it's wheelchair.
Is that slope?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's like, it's sloped out, so this is, this is, uh, the same height, and then this is sloped out.
You have your eight degree pitch or whatever pitch is required.
Curiosity, the sidewalk that you have right in front of the building, as I see here, along this way, is there an overhang? I know, from the building, that's true, so that it'll shadow it over, or is it just a straight wall?
There is a little overhang in front of the building, yes.
So, that kind of shielded a little bit, and, uh, just, I didn't know if that was thought behind it or anything else, made a, I don't know. I mean, it's just that question.
No, um.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, the second, the dog behind the sidewalk was maintenance stuff eliminated, the plow from hitting the new ACM flat.
Okay, so you don't run into the building, because you don't got the brick there no more.
No, the brick there no more.
That, that.
We hit that with the plow, it's not going to be pretty.
That tin turn on doesn't, it bends real easy.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Or the ice even an excellent question, if it don't bend.
So, the all, um, that whole sidewalk is, um.
Preventive maintenance.
Preventive maintenance, not only that, it's, uh, what do they call it? Teed, snowmelt, fucking snowmelt, it's so bad. People walking on it, I go slipping, it's malleable.
So, you're going to put gradient tubing in this, is that what you're telling me?
Yeah.
Why are you making it concrete and not sticking with the same design that you have out front in terms of surface and circle? To distinguish it from the parking.
Maybe it's to distinguish it from parking. It is going to be distinguished from the parking, the parking's on the pavement.
Right, you're going to have concrete and then you're going to have pavement.
Yeah.
Concrete's one of the building.
Also.
Concrete, that, that's concrete pad, it's in the front area.
That's great, concrete pad, it's going to be, so around it is going to be asphalt.
The concrete is actually stronger for your gradient tubing and heat and everything else, and because your, your asphalt will give. But when you turn out the case, uh, gradient tubing and everything else in there, you have a better, uh, aspect of insulation and whatever, alsa.
I'm all concerned about, uh, ninety degree parking is one way, the one-way circulation, that's, I'm concerned about.
Why would that be different than what we had there before?
Because you had two-way traffic with ninety degree, that's why. So, anybody who pulled back out, no matter which way they go, it would be the traffic pattern. Right now, since it's, since it's ninety degrees, somebody could back out the one direction, and suddenly you have a messed up traffic pattern. They'll go, they'll go against the traffic. Usually what happens when you have one-way traffic, you have angled parking.
Well, then we'll slide the angles on the parking.
Well, if you want it, if, if you guys want one way, I think you're going to have to go with angled parking. Um, for that reason, because otherwise, somebody's going to basically.
Give the angle the direction of the traffic.
Yeah, what it does is it's angled in the, that's all with the traffic, the direction.
It says we need to angle the parking line in the parking.
Just checking to see what that is.
Now, that will be mostly customer parking there. That, that one in front there.
That's where we would like to be for customer parking, so that they can have.
Easier.
Right, so they're not scattered all over the place. Exactly, exactly. And I hope I have that many customers in my showroom at the same time. I didn't give it time. I mean, the parking came out, I believe, on the last plant, all the way to the end like that. I mean, it seems to me that this is, is safer and less congested than anything, than what, than what we had submitted before. That's why we made the change.
Well, you had twenty-four, you had twenty-four foot, which you had as twenty-four foot aisle there for, basically, for, uh, for circulation. This is twenty-four feet, so it's two.
So, but we did move the building, and we did move the, so how was it, how was it different?
This is twenty-four, and I believe this is less here.
Well, I don't know how we lost space. Oh, this right here?
Because you had an aisle, you had an aisle, that's why. You, you put it into an island.
This, no.
Aisle is still the same.
It's still the same. I mean, we did, we didn't move the building forward, and we didn't move the curbing back.
What's this? What is this? Is that not a raised aisle? It shows double, double line, that's curbing.
Right.
You have curbing here, so that is not, that wasn't there. That wasn't there. What you had, what you had?
Well, you had, we had sidewalk that came out here.
You had thirty feet between sidewalk and the end of the parking area. Right now, you've got approximately, doesn't even call it out, you've got less than that, you've got about sixteen feet, so, between here and here. That's what I'm saying, it's one way. And you're saying it's one way.
That's why we, that's why we.
You want it to look like this way?
No.
Going that way?
The other way.
Yeah, you're going, you want to go one, one of that one. So, you see, see if the issue is whether or not this person pulls in here and decides, oh, I'm going to go this way, and that's the, that's.
Well, what would be the difference if he did it, well, on this plan here? We doing the same thing?
No, because you have two-way traffic.
Same amount of space. I didn't move my building.
No, but you didn't move your building. You, you moved your.
You took the buffer from five feet, and you're proposing to go to eight feet, you're going to lose three feet, somebody's.
No, they're, they're not going to go.
Why am I doing that?
That's what it says here.
Yeah, well, that's.
Well, that's not.
But this is a new plan from what was submitted originally, okay? If you look at that plan that's in your, that plan right there, if you look at that compared to the plan you just got.
Yeah, they don't get safer.
The only thing that's different is right here, this whole, what he did was originally, he had, um, because the sign was here, he moved the parking. But we determined, we couldn't do that for that reason, we couldn't back out, so we put it back out there, so we put it back to where it was originally in the plan, right here. Okay? And then the other thing, what we did was we moved the shrubs and we moved the cars down, so that we still couldn't, you know, so you could see that we're not going into the curbing.
Okay.
Okay? So, basically, you know.
Okay, so you, you moved this section back, which is going to.
Well, no, 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 no.
Not the raised pavement.
Not the raised pavement.
This is what's on.
Just the vehicle, oh, yeah, I could fit two full-size vans there, that's the size of them, it's a good size, good sized area. And then, if you look at, um, this plant and this plant, you can see that we did not have this sidewalk, but this is where the entry tower came out, okay? So, we're not really taking any more space there, because it's not like you could drive all that close to that entry tower. You know, and we're protecting our entry tower, is what we're doing with the sidewalk in there.
Okay.
I mean, in this one, he didn't put the, the, what you call, but you can see clearly that it's, it was, that way in our original plan.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
So, this part that you're showing here, this is going to be gone?
Yeah, that's gone, that's gone. I don't know what that line is there, because.
That's a curve.
Well.
So, it shows a curving here and then.
Well, that was the original, that's, maybe he wanted to show you that's what the original one, what that he's set was, but it was determined that the parking, right. Once he engineered it, he says, no, we can't do that, so that was architectural, this is engineered.
That'll slow them down quick if they don't pay any attention.
Especially right in front of the building, people going in and out, we want, you know.
So, Ted, how much total room is it between the curving line of the, sort of the sidewalk along the front of the building? And, uh, the planter along Route one?
Presently?
No.
There is, because for years, we never had an aisle in there.
No, for both.
I don't mean that.
What was that, what was the question?
How much, how much room do you have between the planter along Route one and the sidewalk, and the sidewalk here adjacent to the building?
How much room here and here, thirty feet?
Thirty?
Right?
I don't scale it, I don't scale that, so let's look at it, we've got. It seems like it'd be more than thirty. Uh, if you go to the, the edge of the road, or the edge of the planet, the part of the building is sixty-two.
Right.
Sixty-two less fifteen is forty-seven.
Yeah.
Yep.
What's part of that?
A twenty-foot space. Eighteen foot space.
I'm talking about from here to here?
I'm talking about here, all the way over. Well, it looks like it.
See, that is a hit, well, see, there's a, there's a. Uh, we have fifty-eight feet here and fifty-two here, because it does weigh the.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
But then yours, uh, fifty-two on the corner.
Yep.
You have fifty-two on the corner over here.
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two.
I read it as fifty-two first.
I, I, that's actually a lot.
I don't have, my glasses are new, but that might be dirty. Got about forty-five at the nearest point, and then at the very nearest point.
Okay, but that was all.
Is sixteen.
That's not changing from the original plan. That curving, where it was approved.
Sixty-two.
Nothing's happening with that. But we're doing it in a, in a concrete pad in the front.
But it's the, it's the curving that's in at the building now, the sidewalk that's at the building, there's a raised sidewalk there. That distance right there is less, because right now, your travelway that you're showing is sixteen feet. Between the front entrance and the raised concrete aisle, that's sixteen feet.
What's the length of a parking space?
Eighteen feet. Actually, you can, uh, if we make it simple, it's not nine by eighteen. So, it's considerable, it's, it's enough for one parking, so it is one way, has to be one way.
That's what we want.
But again, then, then.
What?
Well, again, it's the issue, when you have a sixteen-foot, um, aisle, you usually have angled parking, usually a sixty-degree parking.
If, if it's a probable angled parking, I just don't understand, I mean, like I said, I, I paid a survey to engineer this out. I don't understand why, I mean, I don't think you can put those parking spaces there if it wasn't a fit, if it wasn't a work.
Well, it doesn't.
It does work.
Well, what I'm saying is it doesn't work from the standpoint of doing the one-way.
Or is there something on there that tells me in your book that we can't have this?
No. What tells me is, let's see, aisle way out shall be, uh, width sixteen feet for one-way.
There we go.
Yeah.
Curiosity, being sixteen feet, you're turning radius into a straight-line parking. From the ability to bend around one car next to one another is. You know, the swing, that's what I'm trying to think, is, is it enough swing? I mean, I, I, I'm just thinking like that, that's all.
We stood up, we've gone up there with the surveys, we, we, we mapped it out, you know?
Yeah.
We sprayed it with a lot, we, I mean, I don't, I don't think.
You drew all the pictures.
I trust as much work as Paul Gadbois has done.
Yeah.
He knows what he's doing.
Yeah, yeah, but I didn't know.
If it wasn't going to fit, if it wasn't a work, we would have done it.
My question is, if you've got fifty-eight feet on the narrow side of the building, and you take off fifteen feet for the planter on Route one, and the sidewalk in front of the building.
It's like fifteen, two.
Five.
Five feet.
It's only five feet for the planter, we waved it down.
Right, and then you've got another ten feet on the sidewalk in front of the building.
Is that the concrete wide?
The concrete walk.
I honestly couldn't tell you how much when I looked at this.
So, something was ten feet.
No, it's, no, I, I don't, you know, we've got the number of different dimensions here. It's probably about ten feet on the sidewalk, right now, the way it's drawn, sidewalk's ten feet.
I think that's a little bit.
I think that's a little.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's like, I, it's not ten feet.
Well, I put it as right.
According to graphic scale, yes. According to graphic scale, he's got.
This table is a ten feet, you don't need anything wider than that. Like, I'm looking at this.
I don't believe my sidewalk is that wide, and that's not ten feet.
I'm just, I'm just using that as an example, you know, from here to here.
Where I'm going with this, Ted, is if, if she has twenty-four feet at least in the travelway, can she get away with conventional ninety-degree parking?
Sure.
And sign it to do one way at, at their preference? The only, the only, yeah, you can't, the only problem is that aisle there, which narrows it down to sixteen feet at that location.
I guess I'm. Wait a minute, but that, no one's backing out of that location. If you're talking about right here, no one's backing out of there. What are you talking about?
This is sixteen feet here.
Yeah, but no one's backing out of there.
This is the part of these parking spaces, this isn't.
No, 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 they don't, no, they don't. How far, why are you doing that?
Because that's where it goes.
No, it doesn't. These are.
No, I think if they're drawn in nine by eighteen, they're probably, the, the line is. But this, this choke point here, the thing.
Right.
The scale, that's right.
The thing is, is like, if he drew these, and these are the sixteen feet, why are you drawing, why are you going another two feet on there?
That's sixteen.
Well.
Let's just like, why is this here?
I told you why.
Right, so, I've got, I've, I've just got a question about how this thing's working here. This should go like this, this here is sixteen feet here, this should be eighteen feet here, which, since we don't have the scale, this one we have, this there. Right. And we've got this here, this is 18. Should be 18 here.
If your calculations are... 16 plus 8 plus 5, 39.
Yeah.
Minus 39, minus 58, you're standing... You're 19 feet.
19 feet.
I don't have a 19-foot sidewalk.
No, you don't have a 19-foot sidewalk.
Then what?
I hope not. This is 10 feet. It's got to be 10. I think this is...
I thought I saw it somewhere.
But it looks...
Now, if...
You can't look at mile 5, it's 57.
Don't look at that.
You've got an 80-foot parking spot. I gave you 39.
This is where I saw 10 feet. And this one, on this, like, white...
On the white and black line.
That's where I got the 10 feet. Okay.
White and black.
All right. This one here? Yeah, because that's not, that's not what they're proposing anymore. This is what they're proposing. So you guys are comparing apples and oranges here. So, that's where the...
Okay, we, so what, what you're saying, this is, this is 58 feet. This is 5 feet. You're saying these are 18 feet, this is 16 feet. If that's the case, then you're telling me that I have a sidewalk that's 19 feet long.
What's going, what's going on here? Is you, is you bumped this out beyond the, the backside of that 18?
Right.
Correct.
So, so that gets into Ted's point of you've got, your narrowest point is 16 feet there, roughly.
Correct.
My thought was if that was out at whatever that delta was, 24 feet, or I, I calculated 25.
Right.
You could accommodate two-way travel through there, so if you didn't want to angle that. Which you wouldn't, because you're just gonna reduce the amount of parking. But I think you'd have to cut back on that concrete pad to make sure you had that full 24.
You're saying...
But that's if you have two-way traffic, and they're saying they're only gonna have one-way. Right, but if they can, they could have a preference to do one-way traffic.
Right.
And accommodate two-way traffic to be able to back vehicles out in front of their, their building, and still, if you got into that situation where somebody ignored the signs, you know? I don't know how that would happen or whatever.
Very easy. You can't, you get a big tow truck.
Then you still would have the ability to accommodate two cars to pass each other.
Okay, I, I see what you're saying.
Start.
But that would, that would not make the difference in terms of whether or not the parking had to be angled or straight in.
Well, I'm saying that would allow them, if they had that adequate distance the whole way, they could get away with doing it straight in and not angle. But that's a feat's what they're trying to accomplish. Unless they yank this, you're saying pull this back to, to 18 feet here.
Right.
Fine.
If that were, I mean, that's up to you.
I mean, if, if, well, I mean, you're, you're talking about a foot? Two feet?
Not even more.
I...
I bet you, I bet you it's worse.
The only reason I see to angle this parking is to force the issue with the, with the public.
And they're like, oh, they only want one way. And all I'm, all I'm doing is, is drawing that out, if, if they didn't care to angle the parking, this would be a way, I think, to do it so they don't have...
One-way traffic, traffic doesn't require angled parking, does it?
But it, it, I don't know...
It's pretty much a convention.
But it is, it is very common that you have that to, so people will back out and only back out in the way that's supposed to be.
Well, I got an issue, right? I'm gonna turn, I was worried about the footer and the else. We'll just make the, the aisle along Route 1 smaller, so you can gain the foot.
Yeah, we could, we could make them all parallel, that would be fun.
I don't think we'll open that up.
I don't think, uh...
If it's that up, traffic numbers are...
Well, it's all that's gonna stop waterfall.
Accommodate, you guys was...
I would just stop waterfall.
It's required to be there. That's what the ordinance calls for, so let's not open that one up, okay? Want to change the ordinance, terrific, but that's what the ordinance says. And you are one part of the guys who made that ordinance.
I don't.
You're on the committee.
I was on the committee, but guess what, did I agree with it?
I don't know.
Just because you're turning me on the committee, doesn't mean you agree with it.
Well, so what do we want to do here, Linda? You want to cut this down?
Well, don't really know why I'm here, but anyway, um...
Well, because you wanted to make a change to the...
I wanted to make a change.
You wanted to make a change to the...
I want to make a change, a change that doesn't affect the curving, the amount of the curving, and we want to make a safer, better entrance into our building, and, um, I don't know why it's getting picked the way it is. I have an engineer that I have to have full trust in, that, that parking will work. And we're all guessing, we're guessing measurements, we're guessing sidewalks.
I can change it, I can move the scale right now.
If you find it necessary, but honestly...
Yeah. I think that's our, our responsibility to make sure it's correct. Because that's what we do as a planning board, we review engineering drawings. And mistakes do occur, and I'm not saying that about Paul, because Paul, we just saw Paul a few minutes ago. But it is a legitimate concern when you have one-way parking.
Just tell me what to do.
She wants to make it happen.
I just want to make it happen, I just, and honestly, well, I'll have a discussion after.
Well, to maintain two-way parking, and they could have a choke point here. You could choke it down to 20. You can get two cars by 20. It's not attractive, but it's gonna pluck there. But it's for a, a limited, limited space.
So we turn it off down here.
Instead of having a 24, the whole width, choke it down. Choke it down. From, from 16 to 20. And then put in your, and then put in your, your arrow, which is this, 30, arrowed here, right?
Yeah.
Okay, probably would be up here, right? You do this, one-way, put a sign there that says one-way, and then down here, do not enter. How do you get in one-way traffic here? No, no, seriously, how?
That's the entrance, that's the way they're going.
Okay, so they're going this way, I'm sorry, I'm just saying. Keep going, why, keep going?
Well, I think it's because of what the...
Because it's gonna be signs, because there's gonna be a certified service sign that's gonna be right over this door, and people that are coming in for services, this is where they're going in for service.
And people come in and look at cars.
And people are...
Oh, they're gonna park there. They're gonna park there.
They're gonna come in here. This is gonna be our main entrance into, into the facility, is that right?
You don't know what you're gonna come in.
But this is what you...
They're gonna enter way too, but they're just not gonna drive down here. I can block that with trucks if I have to.
How would they also get out?
They're gonna be able to get out if they want.
We, yeah, we, we got it.
No, but what I'm saying, they're just not gonna come in like that, you know what I'm saying?
So what you're gonna have is a sign here, somewhere in here that says, uh, one-way. And you're gonna have an arrow here, probably on the pavement, right?
Mm-hmm.
You have an arrow here on the pavement, and probably a sign, I don't know where, here, but something that says one-way.
Say, say, one-way, do not enter.
One-way, do not enter, that's it. And then this shows an arrow here, turn into here, and that's what you're doing. And then you choke this down to prevent the parking there, which is what you want to do. But at the same time, if anybody's an idiot enough, where, let's say, she decides she's going to, or he is, he's here, handicap guy's got a big van, he backs out this way and he starts going this way. If he encounters traffic flow this way, at least there's enough room for this guy to get out. That's what I'm saying.
We'd have to drive up the sidewalk.
Which I think is...
Nobody wants to hold.
That's what the sidewalk's there for.
I didn't, you know...
They're gonna stop with the, the, with the...
The first thing that's gonna happen is their traffic going up on, unless there's a sign here that shows exit, they're gonna turn right into this. They're gonna go down this.
No, they're all, they are gonna go up there.
Absolutely will.
They are, I mean, that's not even, that's not even an issue. There was never, we never had an entrance, we never had an exit. That wasn't, that wasn't the issue.
They don't go all the way here.
Right here. That's it. That's the only place where we wanted to turn it into one-way traffic. And, you know, uh... Well, proper signage and, just, I, I don't think it's a problem in a, I don't... I mean, I, I, I guess I'm a little disappointed, I don't know the exact measure, but when I'm looking at this, you have 62 feet here, minus 5, you know what I mean? There is enough, I mean...
Well, also remember the building's skewed this way, too.
I understand that it's skewed that way a little bit, but you also have a shorter sidewalk here. You know what I mean? So you're going, I, I just...
Linda, the concern is just making sure that if the person that backs out here and goes this way, then cars going this way, you know?
Remember the one-way bridge over on the old Elton Road, and Mrs. DeWitt, when she was driving the bus, got to the top of the one-way bridge, and then when this small little car couldn't figure out what to do, Mrs. DeWitt would drive the bus down on the bridge. Just saying.
And that's bigger than a car. That's what people used to think.
What do you guys think? No real way.
I think it looks just fine the way it is.
I tend to agree with Marty on this one. Call it a mission.
The plan the way it's presented to us now, is that fully acceptable? What, is there any more dimension? That's right here. Well, no, they, they, they gotta, they gotta change this to be this way. That's it. This, that curving doesn't exist, it's not...
What are you talking about?
The curving. This is that.
Oh, it's, it's, it's not there.
You're gonna need a signature block.
I mean, I think he just left that as a guide to show you from the architectural plan, which wasn't, I mean, it's not, that's not a curving on the thing, it's not, and this one's a, this one is a, a, a colored plan, this one is...
And this, this is a clean, I mean, this is, future boards looking at this is gonna ask what this is right here.
Who is?
Future board looking at this for any other reason, is gonna ask what this is.
Right, they're gonna think that it's a curve.
Or something, have them take it out.
Linda, honestly, what I think will happen here is people will end up like this, and it's, it's up to you. I think people that pull in here will end up parking in these spaces.
That's where, is this where you're from?
People that pull in here will just park in through here. And honestly, I, I, I don't realistically envision a real one-way traffic pattern. But I don't know how that, how important that is in what y'all scheme of, of your businesses.
Honestly, we had to, we had to figure out something to make that entrance real to accessible. Um, car, uh, and how the conversation, we've gone round and round with this. So many times, I've talked to so many engineers, I've talked to so many ar, the architects a thousand times, and I own, for some reason, somebody thinks this is a good idea. And now...
The architect's concerned about the ADA standards, so you guys, that's his job to make sure you don't violate a federal standard.
And you know what, also, we want to make it look nice in the front, and that's not designated parking.
Agreed.
And this would, I mean, it's gonna...
This is so much, this is so much better.
Yeah.
Than the other.
It opens it up, you can see the front, and that's, you know?
Yeah, no, I, I, I don't disagree. I think you should put a little bit of brick in here, too, to match this, have, have strength come up here, but that's your decision.
We just might, I don't, but you know what, right now?
Pull it right into here.
But, but maybe we'll put the brick there, just like the, the frost lighting it is.
Which you wouldn't say, one-way.
Well, I'll tell you, the other thing, too, is we're not, I mean, we don't want, because this is the entrance to the service area, we don't want people coming down through here. We don't want people coming through here and getting into service.
Okay, visual of competitive space, basically. And this is, is this gonna be a rise here?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna slope up.
It's gonna slope up, so...
So it's like it's speed tape.
Yeah. Exactly.
I mean, we've lived with that entrance for the past...
50 years.
50 years, and people going, and, and you know what's even worse? People coming in, just parking right there.
Oh, yeah.
But, but...
Right in front of the door.
But, you see, the other thing is, okay, in all sincerity, and I've been guilty of it many different times, okay? Because that's also where the parts service area is. Since parts is now being relocated, there is no need to turn around and come and park there like that, because you're not going after parts as it is now.
As it's now.
I mean, I mean, as it was, excuse me. Parts are outback, so there isn't this need to turn around and make it much two-way.
You have to resell parts, though.
Yeah, you know what, you know what I'm saying now, I mean, and, and it's the way it is now, with parts being outback and everything, the fact is, you have less traffic.
But I think it'll work very much.
I think it will, too.
You have less traffic now in the front of two-way than you used to because of the location of the parking. Which is good.
This, this is, this is where the, the penalty comes out. Right, that's still going in, right?
That is a big entry tower that is right there.
So basically...
So basically, even without that sidewalk, and that was the other concern, while we brought out the sidewalk for, for, we have an ACM plant, entry tower, that if we get hit by a flower and, and get destroyed.
This protects it, I think this is much...
That's what, that's what I said, right, that's why protecting the, this, uh, ten building.
We shrink it a foot, we'll shrink it, we gotta put it in there.
What is the standard width of sidewalk?
There is no, there is no standard. 5 is the minimum they estimate. 5 is the minimum.
That's on public way, sidewalk.
Yeah, well, 5, 5 is the minimum we have in town, but 5 is also the minimum under ADA.
For a sidewalk, yeah.
And MDo2 is 5 is the minimum.
So, so guess what?
If that's the case, with this being ADA and everything else, that sidewalk is probably only 5 feet.
Yeah.
No, 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 it's, it's...
Because it, 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 it's not, I don't think it's 10.
No, it used to be 10 feet, but it's not anymore.
Not 10.
But it's, and there's wide as point right here.
So you still have enough, right?
Yeah, I think it is 10. It's close to 10.
This, this one's dimensioned 10, and it looks like that sidewalk is, if it's not, it's pretty close. Did you get this?
That's what I sent to you last week.
Yeah.
That was sent us a couple of years ago. That's what you guys looked at at, uh...
It's Linda. Hi, I'm fine, how are you? Good, good, say hi to the planning board. Just kidding. Yes, I am. Hey, listen, how wide is that sidewalk in the front? Just the sidewalk? 5 feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just 5 feet? The one...
No.
Yeah.
It can't be 5.
Oh, no, 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 not the brick island, that, the, the sidewalk in the front of the building, where, 7 feet.
And it's not 10 feet.
Okay, it's 7 feet.
And it's not 5 feet?
This is, no, this is 5. This is 7. Okay, another question for you. That narrow part where it's one-way, what, what is the width of that? What's 7 inches, 7 feet there?
Plus the curve, right? So 7 feet plus the curve.
16. Sixteen. And the parking spaces, how deep are that? Nine by eighteen.
That's what we're gonna do, this is a different dimension.
So you have twenty-four feet of clearance before you, so that, so there's plenty of room there to back up without having to have those angles? Yes, okay.
Don't worry about backing up. There's more than enough room to back up. It's the trial.
Okay. Yeah, but, but there's room for them to back up, it's just up to us to make sure that we have proper signs so people know it's a one-way. Okay, all right. But the dimensions, there's, there's, there's room there, the way that you did it. You turn and go in either direction, all right?
Right.
Oh, okay.
That's what I said, this is...
Yeah, I think that was the original tent that Dave was talking about, but there's room even if we did it. Even if we decided, okay, we're gonna go two ways, there's room there to do it.
Well, not at sixteen feet, Paul.
You can make it work. Well, 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 what I'd say, not with sixteen feet, why does that have to be?
Make it work.
Eighteen. We got, we got it. We need it.
I could do eighteen. I could do eighteen.
But that little, that little width, I think that's...
Oh, yeah. Okay, so if we needed to shrink that pad by two feet to make it a two-way street, we're all set. We can do that, okay. Perfect. Maybe we'll just shrink the pad just in case. I know. Yeah? Yeah, no? Yeah. No, it sounds like if we shrunk the pad by two feet, we handled those trucks, those cars a little bit more, then that would give us the option of the two-way if we need to. Okay. Yeah, but if we angle the parking, we lose parking spaces, correct? Okay, all right. We'll shrink the pad two feet.
That would be really, that, that's sad.
If we need to.
You have to change all the circulation to go in and parking, because people are...
Sorry to bother you.
I'm not, I'm not sorry at all.
All right, bye.
See, if you don't, if you do it and you're parking, it's gonna screw up all the circulation, because people are still gonna come in here. Now you've gotta shrink this down, now you gotta put a sign here that says entrance down here, and changes the dynamic.
Yeah, that's why I didn't like the...
I don't like that, I, I don't like angle at all.
I don't want any parking, if anything, I wanna shrink that pad two feet, and then when I go one-way, I go two-way.
Well, what you do is, you still, you still do your, your idea of doing one-way, you sign it for one-way, but if somebody pays no attention to signs, like they go out the in-exit, like they usually do in most stores and so forth, you're not gonna have a jam up there. You're not gonna have a traffic jam here of little, little, little miss, little Grandma Moses here, stuck in here and not knowing what to do, and suddenly have a lot of traffic in this jam up there. They can pass each other. There's nothing to pass each other without them being tempted to come up on the sidewalk.
Oh, God. Linda, how long have we dealt with the public?
Oh, my God.
All right. I'm sitting here with Chen's chair. What's, what's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I think if she's gonna shrink that sidewalk by two feet, then I don't have a problem.
I know either. Can we, uh, can we do an approval contingent on that, so that it'll have eighteen feet?
Yeah, all we need is that plan provided back to us with the amendments.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so she doesn't have to show back up to Paul, not to show up.
No, as long as we get an amended plan with all the proper dimensions and the signature block.
This is gonna replace your existing, um, record plan.
I'll take that, that sidewalk for the amendment, that was in question, and, uh, now, um, can shrink that piece.
So we need a minimum eighteen-foot travel way across the whole front of the building?
Across, across the, uh, at the narrowest point, at the narrowest point, eighteen feet minimum. Because he's got twenty-four elsewhere. He needs his twenty-four here in order to back up from ninety-three percent, eighty-one percent. He needs that twenty-four. He won't turn a corner without it.
So at least eighteen feet of plan is at the concrete pad. Could this move approval still move?
We didn't even want that, someone's gotta say something. You gotta say it so Ann can repeat it to me, and I don't have anything prepared.
I would, I would make a motion that we accept the changes to the site plan, or, or, what are those things called?
Site plan.
The site plan, thank you.
Amendment.
The site plan amendment, based upon the, the conditions that the narrowest area for the drive is eighteen feet. And are we taking out that thing that looks like it's...
Yes.
Right, that?
What is it?
That's, it doesn't need to be part of the motion, it's a, a...
Oh, okay. And it has, it has to have a way for us to sign it.
And a signature block added.
A signature block added.
You have a second on that?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed, I guess not? Okay.
So done, and Paul just made the changes that he had, what's he, they call it, okay? Okay?
All right, um, do you guys have a minute? Can I share a few things with you? Uh, I don't know, no, but I'm on that, I'm on the live on the panel today. I, uh, one of the tasks that we're, you know, that we were set out to do with the stuff, to help businesses make it easier to do business in the town. Mr. Colonel, how would we call him, I can't say his last name, came in and he made a comment, and I'm kinda disappointed that Sir Dewar's isn't here, because he questioned it about the ease of doing business in the town, and how we did the surveys, and we talked to a lot of business owners, that there wasn't very much consistency in how things are held at either entry into the town hall, or planning board level, or whatever it is. I just wanna say, I feel like this is a classic example. I don't know if you know about, you know, where this started, when you got your original email, but it was July eleventh when I sent my original, I came into town hall, and I asked Ted, I said, I got some changes that need to be made. And I sent him the plan on July eleventh. Okay? Now, I know he sent you guys an email, uh, well, we, I have no idea, we sent you an email with the press. I, go, stepping back one thing further, I was advised by non-town officials, not nobody in the town office, nobody at the planning board leveled that. It, it's a minor change, Linda, don't even bother, we'll do, the question at the end, we'll do it as though. I'm like, no, I'm gonna let it all, that would make things change, you know, it's the right things to do. But anyways, that was July eleventh. But thank goodness, you know, we ran into some more construction slowdowns, and we didn't start digging. But it wasn't until August fifth that I received an email, and it wasn't even addressed to me, it was addressed to my architect, and I was CC'd that I was gonna be on the agenda for this Thursday's meeting. And I know you had an explanation for it, but to be honest, that is just bad business. You know, if I had other engagements and couldn't attend, I mean, my architect is on vacation. The engineer had to jump in and take over to get things done. Obviously, you can see there was confusion between the architect and the engineer, because they were able to communicate. And I just think that it's, you know, bad, a bad way to, to do business.
Honestly, we've only had one meeting since the eleventh of July.
I understand that. When he sent you the email, did anybody respond to him? But, but even, even so, if I, if somebody just walked into town hall and say, and I know this has nothing to do with you guys, you don't worry, the town hall, but if somebody was walking to town hall and asking a question regarding what, somebody should be able to answer the question without us having to wait a month to find out what we need to do, or what's gonna happen with it. That was a whole month. And that's just, to me, ridiculous. And then, honestly, I mean, I, I listened to the, the minutes, I will listen to the, uh, the video of last week's, month's planning board meeting. And it was pretty disappointing, because, one, it was never brought up by Mr. Redway until the very end when somebody said, oh yeah, by the way, didn't you send this email regarding where's all this, and if that person didn't bring it up, it never would've been brought up. And I probably wouldn't have been on this week's agenda. And then, when they were asked if, if it's minimal, yeah, there are any guidelines for this, no, there's no guidelines. Why not? Well, sometimes you make exceptions, you build, you know, you let things go to staff review, uh, with, you know, Kate Spatter, Kate Prunell. I mean, why did they get approvals and changes at staff level, and I didn't? I mean, I'm just saying, there should be some guidelines, and it should be a lot easier for a business to know how to do business in this town.
If I may, who told you that this was just a change or?
Who told you it was just a change?
He said that this was just a, a change or a...
A minor change.
A minor change.
It's a minor change. I, I added a concrete block in the front of the building. I think it's minor, but the thing about it is, is had you, had there been a few questions asked, maybe, when, I mean, somebody did look at it, or said, we could've answered a couple of questions before, even, even got here? I mean, you sent me a note, uh, two days before the meeting, wanted to know what the pad was gonna be made of, what kind of vegetation was gonna be in there, and the, the third thing was, was, uh, what is the surface cover of the large island opposite the main entrance? What is the surface cover of the expanded escalade? I don't even know what the two differences are. And what is the plan for it representing the undefined squiggly lines? I mean, I thought I was coming in to answer those three questions. I, and, and to me, that's a waste of my time, and certainly a waste of yours.
Now, from my perspective, okay, and that's all it is.
Yeah.
I thought that we, we had granted you a variance from the fifteen-foot buffer to a five-foot buffer, and I was under the impression that you wanted to change it to an eight-foot buffer. That, that is a, that is a major change to the plan.
Wait a second, I'm gonna go from a five-foot to an eight-foot and put more of a buffer in?
No, no, fifteen to eight.
Oh! No, you said five. You, you originally approved it by...
No, originally it was fifteen, and we waived it down and said you could put in a five-foot buffer. And then we got a plan that said, no, it's gonna become an eight-foot buffer. And I, to me, that's a significant, that's a sixty percent increase, so it's significant, and it's something that we as the planning board should look at.
Oh, well, first of all, it was going in, you originally wanted fifteen, and we're just five, if I was to go in and put an eight-foot, I would think that...
It's still a change, but...
It, it, it's a, it's a large change to what we had approved, which is why we said it needs to come before us. Turns out that you weren't changing it, but we had heard differently.
Well, we didn't hear that.
You had a plan, right? Well, you have a plan. This plan's given, but it's...
I don't believe anything about it. The only thing that I can see different from that plan and what's going on here is I, and you make sure you move those cars back off of the five-foot curb, because they think we're parking on the curb.
Linda, that plan is considerably different than even the plan you brought to me.
It's not considerably different.
You have an eight-foot, fifteen-foot, and you've got this large island, and you've been doing that before. It's significantly...
The only thing that's changed on this plan, then this plan.
Yeah.
Okay, the line right here, okay? We drew the line so that you can see. And then this right here, we added a curving, but we took it away because of the parking, the backing up, so we were adding more curb space.
Understood, but it's still exchanged for the plan. And that's the point the plan would...
But, but the thing was, when they asked, Mr. DeKindred asked you if it was necessary, well, it's entirely up to you, if there was no guidelines or anything that were offered. You put it, and then, and then the question was asked, do you think, and you said yes. It was, it wasn't, well, there are increases in this, and the change of this, this is why we need to do this. It was, I mean, you could've, it could've been swayed either direction. If you would've said, well, no, I think it's a small change.
So your beef is actually with me, because I didn't advocate for it.
No, my beef, no. My beef is that I waited a month to find out that I needed to come back to a meeting that I found out because you CC'd my architect, and not even me, to let me know.
Well, I'll tell you honestly, on your application, your architect was a prime contact, you know that. He was the one who put on your application as a prime contact, he was the one, oh, I always said stuff to...
But I came in to see you personally myself.
Yes, and I took this...
My architect didn't come to see you, I came to see you. I found out August fifth, I should've found out July twenty-sixth, your meeting was July twenty-fifth. That's my beef.
Well, I apologize that we didn't have that on the agenda for, we, we wanted to discuss this on the, what was it, twelve?
This is first meeting in July.
First meeting in July, which got canceled. And then the, the second one, I didn't put it on the agenda, I wanted to find out for these guys what they wanted, because I talked to several members, and they said, well, we should discuss it. So, we discussed it, I thought, you know, quite frankly, in a situation like this, I thought I was up to the board to make a decision whether or not they wanted to see it again. There are times when I have said, I'll do it alone, and the board's been unhappy that I have taken something on myself.
Which, which is, which is fine too.
Because this is not something I have been afforded to, to do on my own.
Then I should've been told, Linda, this is gonna be something that really is gonna need board, planning board approval. I mean, I'll ask the board, but, you know, I don't know why that couldn't have been done through email, so I could've, I, I, I don't, I don't understand why it took that long for me to find out that I need to go to the planning board again. You should, you should've known, I think, before even asking them that I was, should've come here.
And I, I can't address the issue of why it took you so long, but the, the problem with conducting it through email is that it would require a vote, we can't have votes.
Oh, no, no, you didn't vote on this? You didn't vote till we come in? You just, then we just, no, there's no vote. Nobody gave a motion that I had to come in, we didn't vote on it.
No, it was a consensus.
It was a consensus, and the chairman told me to do it. That's all. And they can't, I can't do anything, you know, if they decide to, to, to make a decision like that, they have to do it in a public meeting, they can't do it by any means. They can talk about it, but they don't, they have to do it in a public meeting.
They got, I think, things could've been talked about, like those questions regarding certain things that were gonna be coming up, I mean, just send me an email, and I, or, or call me, and I'll answer it if you have the information, instead of, you know, I just thought, I, you know. Somebody comes in to this town and has questions where they shouldn't have to wait a month, they didn't answer. And I...
Ted, is there a, uh, defined timeline of an application needs to be submitted? Seven days, fourteen days, twenty-eight days, whatever it might be?
Three weeks.
Two weeks before.
Which doesn't make any sense, because if you'd be there for two weeks, technically, I never would've made it on the meeting, agenda. Because if you left on the twenty-fifth, and then you have to have your stuff submitted, how could I get on next week's agenda? It's impossible.
You wouldn't.
I mean, that's, right, you wouldn't, so, so I don't know why it's fourteen days, that's absolutely ridiculous to have to have to submit fourteen days ahead of time.
I'm gonna explain to you why it's necessary. It's necessary because, A, number one, I gotta have some time to review whatever it is. Then I have to get it out to the planning board, they have to have the time to review it as well. So they have some time to, to evaluate something before they get to the meeting. And they have to be able to make some decisions before they get the meeting in the mind. They have questions to ask, they have to review it, and that's why fourteen days is there. It's, it's unstandard, in fact, it's even less common.
If you come back to meeting after meeting, it happened to us, we came back, I don't know how many times, okay? You come in and you get it, you, you, you have to have something determined for the, for the next meeting. How do you get on the agenda if it's fourteen days, the next day is day thirteen? And that's not right.
Well, that's the, that's the way it's set up.
But isn't that a recent change?
No, that's always been...
Always been that way.
So it's been fourteen?
Yeah. And what we've done is we've, we've made special accommodations, actually, I often make special accommodations, I basically throw caution to the wind, and I pay no attention to that rule, and I'll, I'll put the board in some bad situations, and certainly myself, where I have to spend little time reviewing something, and I will hasten that process along. And I do it quite often. I think this board will back that up. And many times, we go way out of our, uh, out of our way to make sure that we speed the process along from every single application we possibly can. If we were to follow the fourteen-day process and, and we'd have had to submit a new application with forms and fees and all the rest of that, which is a standard procedure, we wouldn't even be hearing this thing. We try to fast-track as much stuff as we possibly can, uh, whenever we can, without violating our own rules. Our fourteen-day procedure is not written in the ordinance, that's a procedure that the board can modify when they have a chance to do so. And certainly with the standing application, which happened to you guys, because you never got your stuff in fourteen days, because you had a meeting, and then two weeks later, you were back on the agenda again, with changes that we got a couple of days before. You know, we, we will try to accommodate as much as possible, whenever our agenda allows us to, or whenever circumstances do. We're not slaves to the fourteen days, we're not slaves to always requiring everybody to fill out every single application form. We take amendments on the fly where we can. And in this particular case, the, the board did not feel, the board wanted to look at it, and I didn't feel comfortable, ran mine, and had to say, look, guys, it's all mine. And right now, I've gotta do the plantings, if you recall. It's between your architect and me on the planting schedule and all that, when that time comes. In many cases, boards want that stuff all spelled out way in advance.
We just thought about, you want a day release in there? There's no more plans.
No, no, the, the actual arrangement of those, that's in your, in your fund as a fact. I'm sorry that you had, you feel you had a bad experience, I, I thought we were trying to fast-track this as much as possible.
No, I, you know, but I, I just wanna let you know, like I said, you know, and, and I, this is why people will just do it. If they get caught, they'll do up and ask bills for bills, what happens, I don't know, but that's what we're basically forcing people to do. I'm sure I'm not the only one, um, who, I mean, like I said, I was told just keep a mouth shut and do it. And I don't think you want people doing that in this town, and I don't want people doing that in this town. And I think we just need to be aware that making a minor change like this, I still consider mine, I know you said it's major. It's a minor change like this.
What we were told would have been a major change. Yeah, I, I, this was a minor change, but now, in fairness to Ted, this plan changed this afternoon before we got here. We got a completely different plan than we were given originally. We could, we could very easily have said it was, I realize that, but, but...
Not completely different, that he had changed a couple of things when the engineer got a hold of it, because we had, first one was architectural, the engineer got a hold of it, and he changed that parking spot.
I think these two are completely different.
They're not. I can, I can highlight these two are different.
And, and I can show you one that I think is major. There's a car parked on the road.
That was the architect.
Okay.
He doesn't make this...
It doesn't matter, it's what, it's what we have.
But you know what, if, if, but the thing is, I mean, I heard the conversation in the meeting last week, if they put a problem with the, of the car being parked on the curb before that even went, then, Linda, you have a car parked on a curb, you know, you might wanna change that before, you know, before it goes to planning board.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Instead of let me go to a pl... You know what I mean? Instead of let me go to a planning board meeting where it's going to get declined because of it.
But, but this is, but this, Linda, this, what I'm saying is that this is what we got and this is what we were acting on. We could very easily have said, this came in this afternoon. You gotta wait fourteen days.
Yeah.
Because it's a change from everything.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's going to be a procedure to business.
You, you can't come and say.
And if I have procedures, I have procedures. There should have been a procedure about, you know, no, there's no guidelines of what.
Yeah, I, I could, I could see based on this that we could have said, no, we reject it completely because you've got a car parked in the driveway. No, it's rejected completely, stay with the original plan. We didn't do that. We said, come talk to us.
I think, though, when I went to town office with that, this is what I'm saying, is somebody there reviewing it could have said, you're not going to get this done because you've got cars parked on the curbing.
Okay. And I'll give you that point.
At the same time, I don't make that decision. The board does because I would have said.
You knew it wasn't going to get approved for the cars on the curb.
I don't know that because I would have said it wouldn't have gotten approved without a fifteen-foot buffer like the ordinance says. That's the point. The board has taken discretionary, has done a lot of discretionary things in here, and probably one of the reasons why I didn't feel comfortable championing this because I'm not sure exactly where the board is coming from on the sound of this, to be honest with you.
What's that mean?
That means that the board has made decisions in it that aren't necessarily in accordance with the ordinance. I do things according to the ordinance. I can make recommendations to change the ordinance, but my, my responsibility is to just follow the ordinance where it sets it. And that's, in that kind of situation, it's up to the board. Board could have said, that's a great idea to put that there. That's why I didn't say, get that parking out of there. Okay?
But anyway, no, I just wanted to let you know that, you know, it was frustrating. That's why I came in here. I think I was a little frustrated. You probably know this when I came in.
No.
And I just wanted to explain why, you know, and I, I don't, honestly, based on what I've heard recently with all our studying that's been done, I'm not the only one who feels this way or has felt this way. So I wanted to bring it to, like, as it happens. You know, sometimes when you go back, you say, well, I wanted it out as it happens, so.
I've been on this board eighteen years, and in the past five years, I've seen a major emphasis on helping the business community.
Yep.
I mean, if anybody's complaining that we're not doing enough to try to get the business community, I mean, that's.
I don't think that, I don't think that's the complaint. I think the complaint is not having a better direction, not having procedure when you walk into town hall, know what to do, what steps to take. Better has a permit that you go see before you go to the planning board so that you get everything all in a row before you get there. So you're not going back four or five times. I'll tell you.
That must take a little bit of time to go see a permitting, in order to go see a permitting.
Well, they go, at least if you go to the other, you only go once and you don't get frustrated. You know, which is, which is an important thing. I've done business enough times, they've done something, they sat down with you, you meet this, they didn't come with this, and you walk out of there that night with, with the approval because you got everything done.
Well, whatever it's worth, we're trying to get to that point where, when you look in the zoning ordinance itself, you can see, what do I have to do before I go to the planning board? What do I have to have lined up so that I can go to the planning board?
Exactly.
Yeah. We are working on that. It's.
We have a checklist right now. It's pretty full.
Okay. All right. I won't waste any more of this time. I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry.
See ya. Thanks.
Good night. Let's see. Kate's homemade, but I guess there's no one here, but all right?
No, there's nobody here. They know about the meeting.
Yeah, I saw Chris the other day. He said he was going to be here. Yeah, he didn't show. What do you want to do?
I moved the table.
I don't have an application, and by the way, I think this is a major application. I think this is, this is, this is a major addition to their agricultural demonstration of processing facility. This is what you envision would happen over time. And Chris originally had come in and talked about a small building, but you would see this is a little bigger than a small building.
So what size is?
No part of this was in thousands of feet or proposed during the original. No, no, this is all totally new.
This is new. And you know, this is an exciting addition from the standpoint of, Kate's is, is trying to create their own supply chain on site, which is exactly something, this is exactly the kind of thing this board was envisioning when we wrote this in there.
But I agree, I mean, especially a sketch plan, love it. It's important that we understand the objective of the applicant.
And that, that is their objective. I think the things that I'm going to mention to Chris that I'm a little concerned about, because we had, we had been on the site when I was doing the inspection out there of the factory, and that's when he got it. He said, I'd like to get this going. And I think one concern I do have is I see a lot of drainage that's going to come out of this giving the topography. And I think that this is going to affect the stormwater curve. Or at least he has to amend his stormwater curve. Now, I don't think that he's showing the drainage going down. I think it's in a different watershed, but the question is, is there sufficient? There is right now sufficient impervious surface on the whole site that's already requiring a stormwater quality curve. And the issue is now, I think this is going to have to be amended, even though it's in a different watershed than what the existing.
What watershed does it matter?
It's the site. So I, I think.
Now, is this whole, the existing house and garage, is that the newly constructed home up on the hill?
Yes, that's a required home on the hill. And this is right behind.
Right.
Or actually to the side. It doesn't show where the. Point of order. Should we be discussing this without the applicant being here? We've got a motion on the table, the applicant, and if we're going to review that, we should wait for the applicant to be here to discuss the rights.
I agree. Move a question.
I have a second on a motion on the table, the applicant.
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.
Okay. I will notify him to fill out a complete application and give us the big drawings on this, and I will express my, some of my.
So per Linda's point, this was submitted without an application?
This was submitted without an application on Tuesday because of it's going to be a minor thing.
But therein, you know, not saying that I mind this being on the agenda, but therein lies the inconsistency that business community sometimes proceeds in that, you know, you've got a, submitted on Tuesday that's in front of us versus submitted almost a month ago. And, and I'm not saying that to, to, not, it's a decision that you made, but more of a, this is the process that we need to have. You submit it, you know, on a certain day, or if you submit it before a certain day, you're going to get on this agenda.
And you're absolutely right. I'm guilty of not following the rules. I often put people on the app, on the agenda, push them forward on the agenda to try to facilitate and move the process along and.
You're right, Jamie. And I, at one time, we discussed that we would not take any applicant unless that two-week span was there and everything was in his purview to review and then pass on to us. This stuff was somebody like, you know, that was going to be on the agenda by coming into his office at four o'clock in the afternoon, dumping all this stuff. We have no time to review it. And we're sitting here trying to conduct a meeting, reading what was going on. So I think maybe what we should be doing is steadfast at two-week timeframe. I mean, I don't care if it's thirteen days. It's going to be two weeks.
One of the biggest things that frustrated me when I was in representing the applicant, not, I, ask all the questions you want, you know, grill me on all of the different things that are going on. One of the biggest things that I used to get aggravated with was when you sit, you know, go through all of the things that a town wanted you to do, get your application in two, three weeks in advance, whatever it might be, and get in front of a planning board, and they're asking you the basic questions that were in a cover letter that outlined your proposed project. And, you know, with the obvious notion that they had never looked at it before that night, you know? And not that some people have different time obligations and they can't always look at things before the planning board meeting, but, you know, if you've got a set timeframe in place to put, you know, us in the position and you in the position that you've got to be making a, you know, we've got to be discussing something that you got at four o'clock today or four twenty-five because they got there, but, but, you know, is, is not, is not quite fair.
It's not fair to the applicant, it's not fair to other applicants, it's not fair to the board. And, you know, in other communities. In that situation, they had already, when I was putting the packets together, that's when I realized that they had not submitted everything that they said that they, they had to submit.
In, in other communities, I often, funny part of me.
Twice a month. But usually, usually like here, like we're doing, one meeting is usually for applications, and then the other meeting is for zoning review or old business. No new applications are taken the second week, the second app, the second meeting of the month. And I think that's, we have broken the rules so many times.
Yep.
In order to try to.
The time is the question.
Yeah, we, we've broken the rules so many times in order to move applications along. And we got North East Poland got their, got their approval in, in one month. Kate's got their approval in forty-five days.
Which time? Kate's?
The real one.
That's what I'm saying.
The real time they got forty-five days.
When they finally gave us the application.
Finally gave us the application, forty-five days, a complex application.
How much, how much time do you need in order to establish an agenda and make the appropriate notices?
Um, three days. By, by law, by town law, three days. For a public hearing, ten days. But for a regular meeting, now, it's not like it used to be where you had to advertise every regular meeting in the newspaper. We don't do that. It's advertised on the website, the town.
Posted.
And posted outside. And that town standard is three days. That is a charter, a charter time. Except an emergency meeting, and what those emergency meetings are are very well spelled out. So if we hadn't posted that, you know, if, I think we'd have one meeting where we didn't post, we had a, we had changed an agenda. We didn't have enough time to post, we couldn't get on the agenda.
So I mean, to me, you know, if it's a sketch plan, if you were to get it, because your review time is, is very, would be very limited on it.
Yep.
Most of the sketch is just an introduction to the project. You know, if that's a week in advance, that's a week in advance. You know, it's not, you're not looking at a ton of detail at that type of, of plan. But anything beyond that, you know, I think it really is, is due to the board and staff that you at least have two weeks to adjust it.
And frankly speaking, that plan that you're looking at, that BH2N plan, was supposed to be a sketch plan. And it's a, it's a site plan.
But sketch plans come in all, all kinds of varieties.
It's pretty close to a finished plan, site plan. It's missing drainage, you know.
No, no, what I, what I'm, I'm saying, know it because actually it doesn't give us any perspective of where the existing new building is.
You're right.
There's no location map.
Right.
Yep.
That's why.
And I think that all depends on the complexity of the site. You know, this, this, I think, would warrant it because me looking at it, I couldn't tell exactly where that was.
Yeah, because I can't turn and try to get bearings where 111 is.
Right.
I mean, yeah, because I happen to know, and I'm not trying to talk without the applicant here, okay?
And we shouldn't be. I want to go back to Jamie's point about, you know, okay, here's a sketch plan. And I, honestly, I wouldn't have a, a problem if it were like a week or something until you get here and you realize that we have discussed sketch plans until 10:30 at night.
Yeah.
You know, we tend to get carried away in, in that process. But if we, we have a checklist of everything that you are supposed to do before you get to this point. Now, if you come in, and, and Linda would hate me for it, but she came in at, what, 4:30 this afternoon?
No, she came in at the meeting.
She came in at the meeting with, she should have been told to go away. She changed, no, she changed the plans that we had. She should have been told, that's unacceptable. And I, and I understand that it's frustrating to the business community. It's frustrating to me to sit here and say, I'm looking at a plan that says this and you're telling me I'm wrong because you changed the plan. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. If you're going to criticize me for not taking enough time, then give me the stuff and enough time to look at it. And, and it applies to everybody. So we should, we had, at one point, we had directed the town planner not to bring anything that was not complete. And we should go back to that standard. If it's not complete, don't bring it to us. And tell the applicant, it's not finished. You didn't, you didn't do your job. It's not like we have nothing that we cannot work on.
Okay, I think we reached a subject pretty much to that.
Oh, we got a vote on that?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, did we?
You voted on the motion.
We did, okay.
What you have to do is you, you have, you have another agenda item here you have to deal with.
Okay, uh, which one?
That is DuBois.
Okay, uh, yeah, DuBois automotive salvage, someone who needs to make a motion.
I make, I make a motion that we tabled this because it wasn't delivered on a timely basis.
Okay. Second, all in favor?
Yep.
Close. Uh, okay. Planers report.
Planers report. Let's see. Did I report to you last time? I can't remember. I can't look at that. It's closed. We do have.
Can I make, can I just ask a quick question?
Go ahead.
The agenda item is, the agenda's set, as you say, what, so many days in advance so that the, the public can see what's on the agenda?
I also send it, I also send it out. I have a distribution list that I sent out by email to, to people to sign up for.
So how was the DuBois automotive salvage conditional use placed on the agenda if it only got to you four o'clock today?
Oh, no, no. What happened was they gave me an application, a nice big thick packet, application. And I said, okay, what do I get? I got this.
It was an incomplete application?
It was, it was incomplete in that they had not given me all the copies for you guys. They had given me a limited number of copies. So they had met the, they had failed in one particular rather important area, and that was giving me ten copies.
Yep.
Which it says on the application. So I wasn't going to disseminate to some, not to others. Considering there was a big map, I mean, regal ones, there's no way I could copy it to give to you guys. So I notified them on Tuesday and said, look, you, you didn't give me enough copies and I'm going to take it off the agenda because if you give me the copies now, then I got more time to do it. So.
But that raises back.
That was not a sketch plan. That is a.
Well, this is a conditional use.
It's a conditional use, re, relicensing. So this is not a small, a small map.
But that raises back, if they would have had those initial copies that would have been on the planning board's agenda at sea.
Yes.
To review.
Yes.
No, the only time we would have seen anything about this would have been when they had the package delivered two days ago. And I think we'd need more time. And that.
Yeah, that goes back to the fourteen-day, fourteen-day thing.
Yep. Maybe we need to get into a schedule where.
Right.
You have to.
Schedule.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and, you know, from representing the applicants, just like I mentioned last week with the, the zoning, when there was a discussion of very ambiguous zoning language, you know, they would, would rather, from what I, my opinion, they would rather know the rules and be able to follow them than not quite sure, not quite understand what the rules are, even though they might be in a little bit more of a favor to the applicant, i.e. being able to bring something to you on a Monday or a Thursday. We, you know, that's certainly nice, but, you know, from a, from an engineer's, it might get a little frustrating.
Yep, as Paul found out tonight. Maybe, maybe we should just put in that packet of stuff that they have to have that, hey, you're not going to get on the agenda until at least fourteen days after you turn this packet in.
It already says that.
We need to highlight it in big, bold letters.
What we need to do is enforce it and then sell to me. I got to stop giving breaks because that's what I do. I say, if you get it to me Monday, I'll review it. If you get it to me Friday, get it to me Friday and I'll look at it. Get it to me Friday, and I'll look at it. That, and so, that's a valid criticism. Stop giving breaks, follow the rules, and get the packets two days in advance.
I mean, we, we don't have an established meeting that I can tell that, you know, there's, the first meeting of the month is, is planned review, and the second meeting is ordered and stuff.
Supposed to be.
Supposed to be.
Supposed to be.
But, I mean, that's really not the case.
Because if someone comes to Ted in the intro-
Right.
And again, he's trying to accommodate them, okay, we'll put you on.
Well, I think, I think from, you know, in an effort to help be business friendly, you get something in fourteen days in advance, you can get at least a presence in front of the board to, to say, this is, this is what I'm trying to do, let's get the process going.
Okay, plan is report?
Question on that, which we were asking, under plan. This is a renewal. Renewal-
We, we should be talking about this without the applicant being here?
No, I'm not trying to talk, I'm asking a question of something what we had said before.
Is Du, is this on DuBois salvage yard?
That or any others?
If this has to do with DuBois salvage yard, we should be talking about it from the afternoon here. We've tabled it. I-
On renewals, this is what I'm going at. Not necessarily hip, any renewal. That's where my question is.
You wanna address that?
What's the question? Question is, has the town put into place a renewal form or anything else for the applicants in a timely manner?
We can't tell you that.
Instead of somebody saying, oh, I didn't know my renewal was due. We said when, we went through some of these renewal period of times, that the applicant would be notified three months, four months, six months before it was due, so they wouldn't fall behind the eight ball. That is my question, is this-
That was a slot meeting, right?
Okay. I'm just saying, this is something that we had discussed along the way.
And we've got to be putting the plans-
There's been reminders for all the gravel pits and the, um-
Anything that typically needed a permit from the town.
Correct.
Correctly if I'm wrong, but on the findings, in fact, when you do approve a renewal, which will also put in that time is in fact when that expires? So, it's given to them the day that they receive their approval, they already know when it expires.
But, but there was a discussion about creating a tickle file to notify them that your permit is coming up within a si, I remember that discussion because I, I was opposed to the whole idea, you're a grown-up, pay attention to your own license.
Yeah. Yes. That's all I was asking.
But, but, yeah, there was supposed to be some kind of-
Okay, Marty.
And I was, I was doing that for a while, yes, I was. Sorry for interrupting.
No, that's what I was-
No, no questions, no. Kate, back to plan is report.
The, uh, the staff review committee approved a champagne project. Did I tell you all about that?
No.
Yeah, last week.
Last week.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, yeah.
So, that, you, you had left at that point, I think.
Yeah. Bring Marty up to speed.
Okay, Champagne Energy has bought the, uh, the old tattoo for our childcare center at the Old Post Road and Route One intersection. They were seeking approval of staff review committee. It was underneath, it was, it was done by staff review. It was, um, well-done plan, and, um, they have already started. They've met all their obligations with us. By the way, they, they were tickled with the, uh, process, they went through it very quick. And predictable, and, uh, the checklists were very helpful to them, and they, uh, all the, so they knew all the required items within the specified time period, and it went very quickly, and they're quite pleased. They have started, they've already done demo, the building, the building's gone. Um, they've removed a lot of the, the, uh, poor landscape material there, and, um, they'll proceed, uh, they've made their changes, it looks like it's going very well. Morning, if you ask me, Kate's butter, um, was out there Tuesday, spent the whole morning out there on inspection. It's looking pretty good. They painted the inside, they've got a lot of plumbing, they've made some changes to the septic system design, putting a tent, well, they want to put in a tent, there's a lot of the way, there's modifications that are going on all the time, but they are not something that's a concern of the planning board. Where the septic tank goes, I don't think the, the board's concerned, whether there's a, a storage holding tank, a ten thousand gallon holding tank as a reserve for the operations that, uh, that is for emergency purposes, I don't think is necessarily the board's concern. There's a lot of interior things that they're doing, uh, that have changed. But all in all, it's, it's going very well. Looking pretty good, and, um, they are, uh, they are moving on.
Do they, do they think they're, they're meeting their deadline for Old Orchard?
You know, I don't really concern myself with what Old Orchard's deadline is. My only concern is our deadline and their deadline. Their, their relationship with us is the important, and I'm not as concerned about their relationship with Old Orchard.
Anything else?
Uh, yes. I have met with, uh, today, I spent the morning with Joe Palini and, um, and his team. We're going to be, they have prepared a TIP proposal for the town. They're going to be in a separate session, we'll discuss it tomorrow more, until, uh, Monday, excuse me. And, uh, it's looking very good. The issue there will be, of course, the town has to vote on the TIP. Uh, I won't divulge the details at this point, but it's a situation where the town will not be spending any money on it.
If the town has to vote on that, how soon can they do that? When's it, like, come near?
The member, I'm not sure if it's gonna be done by November, because it's not necessarily an issue of, of, um, I think it's gonna be more of, uh, it might take some time, and it's gonna take some salesmanship. You wanna make sure the truth gets out there, and the accurate numbers get out there, so people, so voters make an informed decision.
Yeah.
I don't know, uh, maybe that, maybe they'll vote on it. The, the thing is, the application has to be approved by state department, you know, the voters. Will the application be ready by then? It looks like it's coming along fine, but there's a lot of factors that have to be determined by the slot, including the length of, of, of the TIP period, and where monies can go, and we're going to create a municipal development district, where we can follow some of the, some of the tax, tax dollars and stuff.
From your discussion, do you see the project getting started in two thousand and fourteen or beyond?
I see it getting started, I think they would like to get it started in two thousand and thirteen. But it's not gonna happen, only because of the fact they're not going to proceed without the, uh, without the decision we, you know, the TIP. The TIP is, you know, is important for the long-term financial considerations, and they're invested, it's really invested. So, can't talk too much more about it because at this point, it's sort of an emphasis decision before, all the information is really public, but, um, it will be very transparent. All the information will be out there, there'll be plenty of opportunity for the public to examine what the, what the proposal is. And, uh, they're gonna spend a lot of time on marketing and, and ensuring that, that the, you know, run does vote, knows exactly what they're voting, and what they're getting into, which I'm very pleased about, and they understand, they understand the history of the last incident with Cynthia, and Cynthia Hopkins, and, um, they're not gonna repeat those mistakes.
Cool.
Nope? Uh, no, I think that's, I know I'm missing a little thing.
You've not heard back from the judge?
We have not heard back from the judge. Judge is still in consideration of the, of the lawsuit. Of course, our attorneys are encouraged about a lot of comments that the judge said about the, that is really, it's what the judge says, and find a summary judgment that matters. Do we have, we have, we don't have the seminars coming up that you also-
Are you supposed to report to them regarding, um, obviously, complaint, anyway?
Sure, thank you. So, we checked it. We did have our first meeting on last Tuesday, this past Tuesday evening, with the complaint review committee. Uh, we have all, but I believe two people were not able to attend.
Wrong.
Three?
Wrong.
No, I think it was two. And the complaint committee is, um, they, they were given an information on how they were to, um, that, that we were not going to do a complete rewrite, this was an update, and discuss what the scope of that update would be. One of the first things they're going to want to do is meet with this board and discuss what your vision is for the zoning ordinance changes. They understand that this is being driven by those changes, so they, at this time, because we're not required to do an update at this time by state law, we're doing it in order to accommodate some, some of our proposed changes. So, they're gonna wanna have a meeting, they might have that meeting in September. I was hoping we'd have it sooner, but we're not, it'll probably be a special night, so, I'm not sure we can do it on a Thursday. So, I want to see what date, it'll probably be a Wednesday, that would be all right, the board would ask, but each one of you, if you could let me know what your schedule is for the first two weeks in September, whether you, you know, there's Wednesdays, that would be great. We have a meeting on the second Thursday of the month, so if you can do the first Wednesday of August, if you wanna do two nights, two meetings in a night in, in a week, we can do the second. I don't wanna go further than that, because that's what, right, they want to get off the ball, and get off the marshals.
I, I would, would you get the fourth of the eleven?
I will be here for either that Wednesday or Thursday, the, or that day, eleven, twelve, whatever that is.
So, probably be better that Wednesday after noon, uh, straight later?
Yeah, the fourth. I mean, depending on what, everybody else is coming, so.
I, I've got either day, because I don't have training at five o'clock, I don't follow you.
Like to get everybody on the board that, throughout this process, it's gonna be very important.
Where's, where's it gonna be here?
Well, I have it here. I'll have to schedule it up, but well, I have it here. And it's gonna be a, you know, a big book.
Big work.
You know, just get some tables. Well, just double up, and then sit on the stage, and start the show.
Is that it? Should we check since that's right, that Gary, the dean of school, that there won't be a conflict?
Oh, don't worry, I have to schedule it. I have to go to Mary Lou, and understand something, everything that, every time we have a meeting here, um, I have to, uh, I have to schedule that and get approval from the superintendent. In fact, um, what I do every half year, you did it last time, didn't you?
Every-
Every six months.
Six months.
Every six months, we do all the meetings, and we schedule them up, because if we don't during the school year, we lose, and there's many cases in which we lose, we, we, we've had meetings, we've lost anyway. You haven't been here for them, but we've been at the CEO's office because we haven't been able to, to get this or, or that conference room, so.
So, do we wanna send out an email, request on the plan, regarding their availability?
So, I was hoping we'd be able to, yeah, for that, for that meeting here. And I will send that out to all of you. So, we should go, it should be good. And what, what I'd like you to do is, uh, they're gonna wanna hear what your ideas are, so that means everybody's gonna be well-versed, not only in our business zones that we're talking about, but if you have ideas on the residential, give that some thought, especially the issue of what we're doing in our mixed-use districts and whether or not our residential districts are su, su, uh, serving us correctly, or serving us well. I know we've run into the, who, who question some of our, our zones, our residential zones as being appropriate, um, whether or not they meet actual site constraints of that area, whether it makes sense that intensities that we have given some of the site, site constraints, and whether we're trying to put square pegs in one of the poles in some cases. They said something very interesting, they were talking about looking at things from a neighborhood standpoint and necessary districts. So, it's an interesting discussion. So, that's all I have to report. Any questions?
Any other business? Marty? Jamie?
Standing agenda item for zoning ordinance revisions on all future agendas.
That was a question that you had, you had brought to my attention.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, it's, uh, on the night that we have, um, an agenda like this, um, and we've got time to spare, but it's not on the agenda to review zoning ordinances. If we could just tag it along and just put down, the zoning ordinance will be addressed if time permits. What are your guys' thoughts on that?
If they have open time? They, uh, yeah, we have open time, yeah, we, uh-
I would say if, if Ted puts it, schedules some things to be on the agenda.
Well, the only, the only issue I see with it, I think it's a great idea to have it as an open item.
Right.
However, you know, tonight would not be, not be bad, but if it's at, if it's nine thirty, honestly, I don't think at that, at that point, I don't think we have the time.
So, so, but we have at that point the discussion, the table.
Exactly, yeah.
If it's on, I mean, the way I see it is, if we have it on the agenda, we can discuss, people from the public that want to be a part of that discussion are made aware that they can attend.
Exactly.
And then if, for whatever reason, projects go long, or, you know, we all are lazy that night, we table it.
Yeah, but we, we should, we, we need to look at whatever it is, because, because the one thing I don't wanna, I would not wanna start a discussion tonight-
Right.
-on the DB two, and then next week, when we've got the full board, have to do it all over again.
And this is another issue.
Because, because, and we do that way too often. You know, if, if, if we're able to go through and, and reach a decision, that should be the decision, you know, if I'm not here, you know, I, I was, I was telling somebody today, I, I didn't like the RSU vote, I lost the RSU, I have to get over it. I was on the losing side of that fight. And, and the same thing applies, if I miss a meeting here, I just have to get over it. If I, if I don't like the discussion and the decision that came down, I just have to get over it.
But if we have that, if we have a discussion item on the agenda, we've got the ability to get into it. Now, then we decide to table it and apologize to whoever might be here because we don't have enough time to get into it, or-
It, it would be nice if we had a discussion as opposed to zoning ordinance changes, just, you know, look at something specific that we could discuss and, and work on.
I, I would agree, you brought up a very good point, because we're always gonna find this to be the case. There, there will, there will be certain parties who will become, probably more regularly as we search, getting closer and closer to our deadlines. If they come and sit through one of our exciting applicant, uh, or application review meetings, hoping that we're gonna get through it in times that we will address DB, or what our zoning is, that they get to plan and sit through a entire meeting and, and find out that we're going to intermedia or not on the agenda item. That's the only downside to this, right? And so, they would really have to, they're, they're taking a chance.
Well, I mean, and perhaps if we do that, we can make it clear on the, on the agenda that meetings over at ten o'clock unless voted on, unless agreed to be extended by the board, and, um, you know, there's no guarantee that all items will be heard.
Do you want to be on here at what time anyway? We have to be on here?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, we don't have a judge?
Not so much now, but when we go into the school year, there's a janitor here in the room, this, he's got that by a lot of the members, kind of, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question to ask to the board. Uh, I know at summertime and everything else, and some of us have had the opportunity for vacations or whatever else, I, I turn on absentee time. When does that start counting?
Are you referring to, uh, the number of absentees in a certain period?
Yes.
I believe that, um, I think they're unexcused absentees. I believe that, um, I think they're unexcused absentees that we're, they're talking about? Is that correct?
Because the majority of us have made this summer these meetings.
Yep.
I mean, and everything else, which is good for the goose, it's good for the camp, is what I'm asking.
Well, I believe under our, uh, under our bylaws, that if there is an excessive amount of absenteeism without, um, discussion from the town manager, the town manager has, well, the board has the right, first of all, to ask that errant member what their intentions is, are, in fact, the chairman is, or the vice chairman is giving that responsibility. And, uh, if, uh, if that person cannot provide a suitable answer, then they can throw it to the town manager about whether or not that person still serves, should still serve, if they're going to continue to have, um, repeated absences. And, uh, regarding to two of our members who are currently absent and will be absent probably till September, they have notified, I believe, the chairman, the chairman is one of them, and, uh, he's notified the town manager of that. The reason why, that's a family issue. And then one other member is, is in a class and he conflicts with that class, uh, and he's notified the town manager of that too. It does put pressure, it's not that... Those two members have, in fact, talked to the town manager and to the chairman, the chairman is one of them, he's talked to himself.
I, I tend to look at that and say, okay, I know during the summertime, it may, it, it might be a little, little difficult, but I tend to look at it more than the six-month one year. You know, if, if you end up missing, uh...
Five meetings in six months.
Yeah, five meetings in six months. We have twelve meetings, if you miss five of them, there's a serious problem there. And, and...
But if you take, like, uh, I'll use Bob in this case, he's, like, took a leave of absence for a month that I had.
Right.
And that's acceptable, as long as we know in advance we can wait for it.
Yeah.
That's what I was...
You know, that's a, that's a special circumstance.
Yeah, and Tom has taken basically the absence because of his course, that he, he's, he's living in Boston, so he can't, he can't be here. And that ends in September, both those cases end in September. So...
Are we gonna, are we gonna wait until September or October to have the election for officers?
That's up to the board, whether you want to have a question...
Our bylaws indicate that we should have, we should have had them a month ago. But I don't know what, I'm gonna leave that up to the chairman, because I've already discussed it.
We didn't have a meeting, the, the, we didn't have the meeting the time it was supposed to happen.
Yeah.
I think we should wait until, um, all the board members are present, if we're gonna, if we're thinking of electing one of those board members in a position. You know, I would have absentees, I don't want to put somebody's name...
At least, so when are the, the two that are on leave of absence returning?
September.
So they will...
Beginning, end, did you tell? I can ask. I think Bob should begin. I think Bob will begin, I think Tom should begin. I think Tom is, he can begin too, but he might be the last, the only, the last one. He might miss the first one.
I, I don't think it's a major issue to, um, the outside of our bylaws, or for a month or so.
No, I mean, the, the only enforcement is within the board. Rich has been...
If there was an uprising?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I...
Well, let's, let's fine ourselves, you know?
That's right.
You're all fired.
We, we should all fine ourselves and take the money and go buy pizza.
Exactly. Because it's, it's not in the charter, it's in the bylaws of this position, so.
And... I'm sorry, I don't mean to go backwards, but I just want to make sure, did we make a decision regarding whether that would be a standing agenda item for the zoning ordinance amendments?
Yes.
As time, as definitely, okay.
And we will continue to observe the second. I would assume that that means, if we're going to go back to our old procedures, that at the next meeting, there will be no discussion of applications of the zoning, is that right?
The second, it's the second meeting of the month, so yes. Because we did the first one for, for, uh, applications, and the second one for zoning.
So it's applications and that's, that's... Why...
I mean, I'm thinking, I'm thinking of an exception here that...
Renewal?
In fact, all, all the data is in front of you right now. Again, we're making an exception.
Right.
Should we, I'm, I'm just asking the board...
I would say no. If we're gonna, if, if we're going to establish the policy of doing applications on the first and zoning on the second meeting, then we should establish that policy and stick with it. And if we're not gonna, if we're not gonna stick with it, we should just toss it out the window and take the applications as they come in.
Yeah, okay.
Question?
We'll, we'll ever get the zoning done.
Question?
Yeah.
How does that fall also under renewals?
Uh, it, it's the same thing, because it's all, it was our policy and we got away from it. And it's always been, we do the applications and all of the other stuff on the first meeting, and the second one, we had decided that we were doing zoning, and we just got away from it.
Only reason I'm asking that is, okay, if under renewal, let's say we have to schedule a site walk, or turn on, or need additional information so they do not go over their period of time of renewal, that's why I'm asking that sequence of questions.
They're already over their time.
Okay.
But, yeah, if normally...
I didn't know that.
Normally they should, the applicants should be paying attention to when their license is up for renewal, and they should be coming to us within plenty of time. And we, since we always do the site walk, if, if we knew, for example, that Fred Murray was coming to us in two weeks for, for a renewal, we could schedule a site walk. There's nothing that says that at that zoning ordinance meeting, that we could not schedule a site walk for the following, the, the following, uh, meeting. We just wouldn't do anything at that, at the zoning ordinance meeting.
Okay, that was the only reason why I was...
And, and, good point, because otherwise the night could end up leaving...
You, you could get a one month, two months, or whatever else, I, I mean, uh...
Okay, I know that, I mean, my opinion is that I wouldn't be opposed to seeing, you know, sketch plan level conversations. Just to, to get somebody, as they're starting to get a project going, get him, get them moving on.
If we could keep them at the sketch plan level.
Well, but that's, that's...
And that's our problem of us.
To, to keep it at a bigger picture level than worrying about the details of, of grading plan, even though that might be what they provide us.
Yeah, and, and that, that, that has always been our problem, because we do get carried away and, and pass the sketch plan on.
Yeah, because we shouldn't be the design engineers.
No.
Although it does give them an idea of whether or not the parking is really true.
Right.
There are times that, you know, especially in, in some of the commercial niches that we encounter, there's a lot of flexibility in what they're doing and how it meets the requirements. They need to know that. But that, they actually, those who do that usually come in and sit down and meet and, and propose, make to sit down and go over the proposal. There's a lot of, a lot of dependence on staff or resource before doing the project, rather than doing it and saying, here, tell us what you think, and we get back to it. It's, that's not how the, how most people usually do it, they say, here's the idea, and they sit down and they go over it, and then we work on it together. In fact, that's why I'm attracted to the, the sketch, the sketch, the sketch out ideas on the table. And that's how, usually I do the sketch plans, and when the sketch plan comes to you guys, a lot of, some of those questions are already answered. And we need clarification and buy-in from this planning board and several other committees.
That's another question.
Yep.
Not related to sketch plans or anything else, for the idea of Route One or anything else. Have we heard anything, or is it not our position at this time, of fire hydrants and fire prevention, or anything else?
No, the chief, the chief, uh, has, you know, he hasn't done anything since our, our last meeting. I don't think he's going to have a chance to do that for a while, or, I don't know what his schedule is. I think he was planning to come tonight, but something must have come up, because he wanted to come and discuss issues like this with us. And I want to make sure that we, we schedule a time where he can come and discuss what his concerns are and his ideas are with the board, because he understands how, A, this board is supportive of fire department, B, that the, this board wants valuable, not only input on projects, but planning input on fire, uh, protection facilities throughout the town, and he wants to work with this board on providing an improved, uh, infrastructure for fire, uh, protection and fire site capabilities. Especially considering what happened with this.
Yeah.
Uh... The next question, also along those lines, okay, we know where we had our quote thousand foot, okay?
Yeah.
Written or not written, that's along the main card.
Yeah.
We do not have anything also in our zoning, or whatever you want to call it, okay? Depth inward.
We do not.
Something that I think in the future of expansion onto your, uh, possible new zones should be considered, of inland depth, because if you got a thousand feet one way from hydrant to hydrant, in, in theory, and then you're running another thousand feet in, uh, you're pushing a lot of hoes, particularly if you can have a, a hookup within a greater depth to ascertain your firefight, just like where I was, I was asking tonight, I'd say, like, the depth of where we were on our site walk, okay? The depth of that property, okay, because, uh, behind that property also is something that we had made into a commercial quote-unquote zone. And coming up on the old post roadside, okay, your distance on your fire hydrant, to go that far up, we have nothing going landline between one to the other. That is why I asked that thought and questions.
It's, it's going to be a challenge, Marty, it's good thinking, I mean, we need to do more infrastructure planning. If we're going to aggressively seek to, to do more interior development, more of the backland development for commercial purposes in the future, we are going to need to have extension of, um, fire lanes, basically, because, quite frankly, given some of the distances between hydrants and Route One, and you're right, the, the extent of having to lay hoes and a thousand feet in, it won't be that long, but let's say it is. We're talking about fishing loss, it's going to be very, very detrimental. We don't really have that many pumpers to be able to do the relays, we're gonna have to rely on...
We would, with our mutual aid. With our mutual aid, we've got no problem.
Yeah, but the point is, the point is setting up water supply, and, and if we're going to do this kind of, excuse me, expansion, we do need to have infrastructure expansion going along with it. So we're gonna have to extend our water lines and fire hydrants. How we do that, Marty, and how we gauge what's necessary right now, um, it's frankly all on the fire chief's lap. We have no standards. We can establish standards, and I think we should establish standards, so that whoever's developing land can, can have some predictability in what, when they're, when they're determining whether or not they want to do a project.
We should develop something that says, we're, we're gonna close Route One, so snowplows don't run over our large diameter hose.
Yeah, that's gonna go really well with DOT, thank you. I want to pick a fight with DOT at this point.
They did when the boatyard caught fire, they filed over the LDH, and we lost the water pressure, and, and not the map.
Well, they would say to you, you need fire hydrants on the good sides, you know? And they're like...
And, and your eyes can't argue that one way.
So, um, all right, so just to interpersonally, yeah, in one's role, we can...
No, no, I don't want to move on, I just want to backtrack for a second again, just for verification for the minutes. Um, what is the ultimate decision regarding the meeting schedule? The first meeting of the month will be applications, and the second meeting will be zoning ordinance review and initial sketch plans?
Well, that, that's what we had originally set it up.
Right, and...
And I thought we just, we were gonna go back to doing it that way.
And so we're gonna add the sketch plans to the second meeting of the month, not just ordinance review, I just want to clarify for the minutes.
I'm just a little worried about sketch plans.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
I'm a little bit concerned about sketch plans, because that's...
Like preliminary?
...the meeting was planned, I mean...
Well, like the preliminary...
We can even follow a lot of detail.
We could limit it to a certain time, or, you know?
That follow?
No, we could do, we could do one per, per meeting.
I think that might be arbitrary, which is the decision.
No, I, I don't think that's, that's capricious at all, it's definitely arbitrary. We're gonna do one, first one comes in, you get on the agenda. You don't make the first one, then you're gonna show up at the, the regular monthly meeting.
And I might argue that actually the times that we've broken our own rules have not been for sketch plans, which is for finishing up a project.
Right.
For projects, it's, it's gotta make...
So it's like an old application.
We were to say, yeah, we will sign your Mylar, we will do your final, we will sign your Mylar, and once we see, we will see all the changes that you're gonna make. That's what we've done, it's usually when we, when we... And then it escalates, and then we...
Right.
And then we get more than we wait, before we know it, we're, uh, we've, we've lost our focus and spending that second meeting too.
Then maybe we should just go back and say, you know, we're just gonna do some, uh, whatever, or anything else, you know, that has an issue with it.
And the board can make the, if you want to break your rule, you make, you make the vote, don't leave it for the staff to do that.
No, we wouldn't be able to do that, because we wouldn't be at the meeting before we could break that vote.
Well, actually we would, because it would be at that meeting, that would be on the first meeting of the month, and they say, well, so can we get this, if we get this all done, you know, in a week, will you consider a new, uh, rule on this at your next meeting? And that's your opportunity, where you guys can do that.
But at that point, the answer would be no. Yeah, no, because we're not gonna rule on anything. If you have it done and completed and all the deeds and signatures, okay, maybe we'll sign it, but we're not gonna rule on it, because we're not gonna, we're not gonna deal with that issue, we're dealing with only with the ordinance too.
What's your decision? Still confused.
You're gonna need, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna...
Do we have a vote consensus, or a vote that's, that's committed by the board?
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we have our first meeting for, uh, applicants to come to and make, make their presentations, and the second meeting of the month is for nothing but ordinance work.
I have a second? Oh, well.
I'm used to not getting seconded.
This is our meeting, you know?
I mean, I, I think, I think it could be important not to diminish that we, that we don't need to do the ordinance review. I, I haven't been exposed to that yet, to understand, I guess, the depth of what we need to do.
Discussions.
Maybe I'll appreciate that more within a few, a few more meetings. But I, I, like I said, you know, would like to keep that available for the, the process to continue moving forward.
My, my concern is that we end up spending
Yeah.
a lot of time at that second meeting, and we don't get any of the ordinance work done. We've been working on these ordinance for what, three years?
Yeah, two years.
And we're not making a lot of progress, honestly.
So, so my point to that is, if we had another person here tonight, we may have, that may have moved forward to a vote, and so...
Yep.
I think if, if, I'm not opposed to discussing that more.
But the other thing is, if you have somebody who is trying to line up sweat work or whatever else, uh, and to get a project started before the season turns, you, you know, as long as everything is in place, yeah, that, 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 that's where I'm going at.
I, I understand what you're saying, Marty, but honestly, at that point, we're being asked to approve the plan, and that's not the, that's...
No, if it's in place, not through, not through exceptions or, or anything else. I mean, we've all, we've all been there before.
Okay.
Okay, so you wanna table a discussion on what we're gonna do at the second meeting?
So the motion failed and we have to have a, a re-discussion.
What?
Sorry.
Anything else?
So I guess the question is, do, what do I put on the next agenda?
Zoning ordinance is, okay.
Yeah, if there's nothing, no bracket?
Because what we do have.
Because that's really the rule that's in place right now.
Yeah, that's right.
That is the rule.
That is the rule that we have in place right now.
So we're not making any changes, we're only gonna say, you know, you guys, so, that's a rule. Even the rule is as a complete application, fourteen days from the second?
Second meeting is only on this, is all.
Oh, that's the, that's the current protocol.
So why don't we make a motion to, yeah.
Because, because we were having the discussion about whether or not we should, so I thought, let's, let's find out where everybody stands. And now we know. Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, we adjourn.
I have a second?
Yeah. Oh, I forgot to raise my hand.
Well, there we go, we've got a consensus somewhere.
I'm used to not having a consensus somewhere. I'm just, I'm all right.
For the first time in fifteen years.
Word.
For the first time in fifteen years, the meeting's ended at nine fifteen.